Meeting of the Board of Directors, Tacoma Public Schools' study session to order. Will everyone please rise and join me in the flag slip? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional ancestral and historical lands of the Puyallup Tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Puyallup Tribe. This acknowledgement serves as a first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who have inhabited this region since time immemorial and to whom we give thanks for allowing us passage on their lands. We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and sociopolitical realities. And as a point of personal privilege, before we dive into this agenda, I would like to, you know, recognize and call to attention of the what happened in Buffalo recently, Buffalo, New York. And you notice the flags are at half mast, calling attention to this and hoping every time you see that folks see that, that they're thinking deep in their hearts, what what we're all facing as a nation. It's a crisis. And and the topic today about anti-racism policy is really at the heart of that conversation. So with that in mind, I think I feel an even greater urgency to to dive in and to get this work done. Time is of the essence to to prevent any more Buffalo events from from happening. So and I know my colleagues feel similarly. So thank you to the public and to the superintendent and the staff and everyone who continue to work during these difficult times when, you know, it's it's just emotional and terrifying for many students and and staff and and community members. So thanks to everyone for joining us tonight and diving in. All right. Tonight's study session is what our objectives are to discuss current policies that address equity and discrimination and to discuss draft language for an anti-racism policy. And item 4.1 is the anti-racist school district policy development process, as well as sort of our what we've done both historically and recently on these issues to highlight and address discrimination, equity, racism, and bullying and all sorts of different topics. And I'm going to turn it over to our chief, chief, our chief counsel, Renee Trueblood. And if you and Malik wouldn't mind taking us through this, that would be great.
Thank you very much. It's really an honor to be here. And it's an honor to be part of this work. It's a point of of pride to tell my kids what I'm doing tonight, to tell my friends what I'm doing tonight, that I get to be part of an organization that prioritizes anti-racism. So thank you very much. The I'm also so proud to get to work alongside our general counsel-elect, as I like to call him, Lisa Benrow, who will be taking over in July. And this is one of the great joys of my job is getting to partner with Malik. And we get to banter back and forth and and challenge each other and try to come up with something that's going to be really the best for Tacoma students. So thank you. As we work together on this, if we go to the next slide, I wanted to acknowledge that this isn't the first time that Tacoma Public Schools has talked about anti-racism. It's a process. What we're doing tonight is a continuation of that process, and we won't be done. It's got to be an ongoing process. And some of the good work that's been done even before Malik and I joined the district, I spent some time with Carla trying to capture some of the history of things that she's done since she's been here. And we've been lucky to have some really amazing folks help us with some professional development. Erin Jones and Jamad Canley are two of them who have taught us a lot. The Equity Design Team that Carla has led, and we heard from them at the last study session. That work began in 2018. This board began acknowledging our Puyallup land's ancestry this last year. So proud of what the board did with renaming both Silage and Hilltop Heritage. And I've really enjoyed working on the Equity Policy Team with community members to get community voice and diverse voice as we build policies. And then the board really stepped up this over the last few months with your retreat, our last study session, and then tonight's study session, of course. But there's also been some policies before now that I think are important to reflect on and appreciate. Thank you. Next slide is back in 2014. This board was innovative, as you've been awarded many times before. And before there was any policy in the state about equity, the Tacoma School Board adopted a policy about equity. And at the time, it was also labeled non-discrimination in equity. And that's because there wasn't a model policy yet at that time for staff non-discrimination. So one of the things that I think is useful to take a look at as we look at our policies is that equity is different than discrimination. And I think you'll see as we look at some of the draft language that was put into an anti-racism policy, we try to thoughtfully define. Equity is about ensuring that everyone can reach their potential, getting the resources that they need and the support they need to reach their potential. Whereas discrimination is actually treating people differently because of who they are, their immutable characteristics. And so we have this policy that there is not a model policy in WASTA for a 3111, an equity policy. And so that's something that as we get into the discussion, I think is worth worth talking about. The rest of the policies I have listed up here, though I don't recommend at this time that we make any changes to. For example, sexual harassment of students was initiated in 2000, and then it was updated in 2017. It's up to date with the law, with OSPI's expectations, and WASTA's model policy. So we have a strong prohibition against sexually harassing students, and I I think that one is good. Likewise, in 2011, we adopted a policy against the harassment, intimidation, and bullying of students. That one, we heard some community feedback that it might be right to take a look at that policy, especially as it relates to special education students. So I think that might be one that we look at over the next year. But I wouldn't say that there is a sense of urgency about it. Our 2010 non-discrimination students, again, in line with WASTA's model policy, state law, and OSPI recommendations. It was established in 2017, and it's very clear. And then we go to our staff. And our staff, we have a policy called Safety and Civility in the Workplace that really addresses what our expectations are for culture and climate in our schools as we want our staff to be whole educators and our staff to feel supported. And so this is one that we rely on a lot as we partner with the Human Resources Department and help to resolve workplace conflict as it arises between our staff. I think that is a strong policy. 5265 and 5266 are the counterparts for staff as we have for students. Non-discrimination and and prohibition against sexual harassment for staff. Those were also recently updated to comply with the law, WASTA and OSPI. And so I don't recommend that we need to make any changes to those at this time. Again, those address discrimination, being treated differently in your terms and conditions of employment. But what we don't have and WASTA doesn't have is an anti-racism policy. And in my research, we weren't able to locate an anti-racism policy in Washington. We saw a few anti-racism policies from other places around the country, but there was no model policy. And we do recommend, as you guided us from your last study session, that we develop a policy, a standalone policy on anti-racism. So I'll turn it over to Malik to tell you about how we went about writing the draft language for you tonight.
Yeah, so as you can see in the agenda and folks at home can see in the agenda that's been upended here, we created that draft policy by going through a few steps and taking key information from a few places. So as Renee pointed out earlier, we've already had a board retreat. That was in early March, I think it was March 1st, 2022, where there was some time spent talking about kind of what an anti-racism direction and policy might look like, what might that language seem like. At the last study session we had, it was another the topic of that study session as well. That's what we did is we went back over some of that information to try to crystallize the direction we were hearing from board members into some language that you could today take a look at, give feedback on. And we can kind of craft and work around to make sure it really reflects your vision. Like Renee said, we didn't have a lot of examples to pull from in Washington State. So we kind of expanded our scope and said, okay, where else in other parts of the country can we find examples of organizations, school districts in particular, that have looked at adopting an anti-racism policy? We found one that was pretty good from a public school in Virginia that we looked at for some guidance. We consulted GARE, the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, one of the thought leaders in this area. A lot of municipal governments work with them, including the City of Tacoma Municipal Government. We consulted a bunch of Title IX resources, Washington State law, federal law, the Department of Ed. They have an Office of Civil Rights there. We looked at some OSPI guidance as well. Really what we're trying to do is pull some of that really important legal language, some of the student-centric language, some of the language from thought leaders, pull it together into a policy that you can take a look at pretty soon here to see if it reflects that direction that you were setting out at previous board meetings. So before we dig into the draft, this is sort of what how you'll see it broken out. So if you pull from the agenda and take a look at the draft language, you'll see it's broken up into a few different sections here. So at the outset, we talk a little bit about purpose. You know, what what is the reason we're here discussing an anti-racism policy? I think President Bonbright spoke a little bit to it at the beginning of the meeting today. You know, there's a there's an urgency around this. We're focused on student achievement, student outcome, student health, you know, the whole child and the whole educator. That kind of reflects the purpose of this work. Then you'll see we move pretty quickly into definitions. What we're trying to do here is sort of establish some common vocabulary for the work we'll be doing. And so that when someone, like Renee was talking about earlier, when someone talks about equity, what is it specifically we're talking about? When you talk about discrimination or anti-racism, what are those languages? How does that language mean as we look throughout the the policy? And then we have a few different sections here. So if you sort of scroll down to the second page, beginning of the second page, we started this off with some language like we believe. And so again, what we try to do is crystallize, distill some of that information that's come from your previous meetings and try to sort of put them in like categories here. So we have, what do we believe about schools marrying our communities? What do we believe about the welcoming nature of anti-racism and our work in that area? What do we believe about staff development and training? What do we believe about the nature of culturally responsive schools? And then there's some commitments at the end there about, you know, how we must operate in order that we can make sure we are a welcoming environment. This is for students, staff, for families. And so what we'll do is that we can open it up and have, you know, board members take a look at the draft language. Now, you know, we've it's we're not in a first reading today. You know, this is a study session. So we understand that, you know, there'll be maybe some areas we want to have some more information about or have some different ideas. We'll take notes here, Renee and I, and then we can talk about next steps as we sort of reach the conclusion. And then then we'll talk about where we go from here.
Okay, perfect.
Yes.
Thank you. Our strong team, I love it. This has been fabulous, how you took what we were trying to say and what we wanted and put it into a framework that that really reflects our conversations, both amongst ourselves and with you. So thank you so much for that. So we are now going on to 4.2, which is the Draft Anti-Racism Policy Conversation. And this is a discussion amongst all of us. And so I thought we could, I want to approach this a couple of ways. I want everyone to be able to have some reflections. But I also thought it might be, you know, helpful to go through section by section, like talk about the purpose and then talk about the definitions and then, you know, then maybe go through the sections. But I didn't know if before we started that, if anyone had, you know, comment about this project, what we're doing for you personally, you know, whether this was a time for any kind of reflection or do you want to just incorporate those thoughts into the conversation as we do it? Go through, you know, sequentially? Say, let's do the work. Cool. Anybody else have anything you want to say? Perfect. Okay. Then let's turn to the draft that has been provided by our wonderful staff. And we'll start with the purpose. And you can see that we're talking about, I'll give everybody a minute to read it. Does everybody have a chance to read it? Okay. So anyone have comments or thoughts on the purpose and whether it is captures what you feel that the purpose of this is from your perspective? Dr. Leon, Director Leon, would you like to start?
Sure. I think it's a very well-written purpose. I think it's important to have that background in there that you have in the first couple of sentences about why this is important, what we've had to deal with in this country, and then how we want to, in general terms, address these barriers in the rest of that paragraph. So I don't have any specific alterations for it right now. I'd like to hear from everybody else, too. But I think it's important to then at the end have the definition, or not definitions, but the description of all the other forms of bigotry and bias that we are against and want to protect those groups also.
Okay, so so your suggestion, I just want to make sure we captured that, that.
I'm not making any changes. I'm just.
Right, just.
Pointing out what I like about it.
Okay, great. All right. Director Stroger, would you have any comments?
Yeah, on 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 March 1st, when we were starting this conversation, I can't remember who asked, somebody asked, what do you see as your dream for this conversation? And I'll be honest with you, this purpose statement was it, right? The purpose statement was where do we as a district stand as it relates to anti-racism? And this purpose statement explains exactly that. So, I mean, I was telling Director Keating earlier today when we first got in this room, like, yeah, this is this is the direction that we that we need to go in. So I just, I thank you all for your work as it relates to putting language together. The purpose statement is powerful, and I don't think that it leaves any gray area as to where folks could say, oh, there's a there's a foothold for a little bit of, a little bit of racism here, a little bit there. No, it's it's very clear where we stand as a district with this statement, so.
Perfect. Thank you, Lisa. I mean, Director, sorry.
That's fine. All of that, yes. I think what I what I really appreciated when and I still want to continue to give credit to Director Stroger about bringing this forward and initiating and instigating the conversation. And I think when we were first starting with Albromarell, did I do it?
Yes.
Malik, I'm looking at you.
Sounds good.
Okay. You know, I didn't do that right. And you're you're gracious there. So when we were looking at this, I know, like, the purpose statement really stood out in terms of the just how explicit it was. And so then, you know, as we've had these conversations since we since March 1st, making sure that whatever policy we develop that it is in the essence of Tacoma Public Schools, that it represents Tacoma Public Schools. And I just want to iterate what Corey said, that this purpose statement in this draft is, it's powerful, it's concise, it's direct, and there leaves no wiggle room to what Corey was alluding. So I'm I'm extremely impressed.
Director McElroy.
Similarly, I feel that it doesn't leave any room for error or a miscalculation of thought. It was very well put together. I think I'm prayerful that people who read this understand that racism is not just black versus white. Racism comes in all colors and all nationalities and all ethnic groups. I think that when we talk about the history of racism, like we included words like slavery, segregation, Jim Crow, people tend to associate those only with black people, not understanding that it happened to Japanese people, Mexican Americans, Czechoslovakian people here in America. So I think that, I hope that everybody can really grasp that concept when they're reading things like this. I think the purpose is spot on, and it's also very inclusive. And it includes that we also are against other forms of bigotry, which I think is very important. It's there's racism, there's bigotry, there's bias, and there's so many other compounded issues. But it was all brought together in a really concise way. So thank you.
So that that raises actually a question or a comment from for me, too, on the bit about that slavery, segregation, and Jim Crow tend to to point to the to the black experience. Is there a word we can add to that list that would make it more inclusive to what happened to the, you know, the Chinese, the Japanese, the folks who were building the railroads? And, you know, there was, it wasn't the same, but it it sure seemed that way to, you know, they they were treated that way. They just didn't have a name for it. So I'm not sure, is there a term that we can add to that list that will add in the populations you're talking about?
I am not an expert, so someone else.
Oh, the finger was being pointed.
I'm passing, I'm like, someone.
Yeah, I'm not an expert either. But I think one of the things for our process will be knowing that this is not the first draft. But really, as we're orchestrating that, is that is something that we then could go explore. You know, I've gone through this a few times and read it through different lenses. And I think there's all, it's extremely well-written. And there may be some things, but as I reread it, I think there are pieces in there that does capture that. And so that including, but not limiting there. I think the purpose, the term rejects, I don't know how, and will not tolerate, is another one.
I like.
I have struggled with this, and not from an intent perspective, but how to capture this. Civility cannot be legislated. What we have and what we have seen is, I think we, as a society, almost became numb to the terms of racism in recent years. In 2022, we have our own citizens being hunted. It's 2022. We have to find a way to capture also that when we see that, we also have an obligation to report it. And I don't know the way to do that. But make it very clear is you do not have permission to be a part of our community and pretend that didn't happen. And I don't know where, and I apologize, it evolves for me. It is very clear to me that this is a new flag that we are raising. And so I'm grateful for the team. But those would be some things that I would, obviously, I'm not a policymaker, and so I don't have a vote. But you might want to also think about as you go through this.
Those are great points. Thank you, Superintendent. I think we all struggle with that whole civility can't be legislated. And yet, how do you bring people along to to play by apply the rules and play by what's right? So see something, say something is an interesting concept.
I think it's also an expectation, right? This policy sets that expectation of what is tolerable and what is not tolerable. And so when you have, like, throughout the the systems within the within Tacoma Public Schools that it is, it is explicitly stated what the expectations are, then people can grow into those expectations. And similarly to how, like, in some degree, I think about the whole child and when the whole child first started and how it was a culture and climate shift that took years and took a whole shift in mindset until it became a mindset. And then there is that active practice, right? To not forget, right? That this is who we are, this is how we, you know, doesn't mean that it stops behavior that is racist or behavior that is unwanted. I think that this is one of those beginning steps to to say, this is the way we are and who we are moving towards with this policy or this draft policy.
Cultures changes, language changes, generational impacts are there. What was once okay was now not okay. Somewhere, you know, we have to find a way to, and maybe it's in the later piece down the road, not only articulate that obligation to correct misconceptions or biases, like, forgive me, they're not misconceptions, they're biases, and that you will be supported in that as well. So we have to create a space where folks can say, that's not okay. And that is your obligation and support. So to foster to get to that place, Director Keating.
Director Leon.
So I agree with your point about reporting. I think that somewhere in the document, we should put that reporting is actually required. And because you could look at folks that don't do anything or don't don't follow through on protecting other people are really harming those people in the society and that institution that you're in also. So I think we need to make reporting mandatory and have some repercussion for folks that don't report events. I don't know if that's possible or not. And I think also the word, like, the word rejects, whether we use that or not tolerate. But I think within this document elsewhere, I think there's discussion around the goal of eliminating racism. Even if we, our people may feel, maybe you can't, maybe you can't. I think we should have the goal of eliminating it. I mean, maybe having the word eliminate also in that sentence. So the district rejects racism with goal of eliminating, rejects or with goal of eliminating, or something like that. I'd like to put eliminating somewhere in that first purpose statement paragraph.
I would piggyback off of the the culture part and how it relates to this policy. I think that when it comes to reporting, speaking up, see something, say something, we have to get to a point where we understand that as a district, staff, students, everybody that's a part of this district, that what you allow will continue. And I think that when you can hold on to that mentally, it kind of changes your perspective and your, I won't say willingness, but your, the courage to say that that's not okay and feel that you are supported in in doing what's right, right? Because it only takes a few times for you to report something, for someone to stop completely, right? Especially if the, I don't like the word repercussions, but if the the impacts of what's happening are severe enough. You can get what I'm trying to say here, man. Although if what you allow will continue. So reporting will be supported.
In a previous session, Director McElroy, you talked about institution versus individual racism. And and I just, what we're seeing a lot is happening inside of our neighborhoods through social media, outside of schools, is spitting into schools. And so as we continue to eliminate racism, I think it's important that you folks understand as well as this, it's going to be also our responsibility to start having broader community conversations with other municipalities through JMAC. It can't just be the schools that have a position like this that changes the community's culture. And so I'm excited about this. And then at the same time, I think to myself, this has got to be just the beginning. And so I think there's opportunities for your regional or legislative. And I apologize to both Renee and Malik because now I'm going down a birdwalk. So I'll stop, but I just want to put some context of what schools versus we are a piece of the community, we are not the community.
President Bonbright? I want to double down on Enrique's point of having a goal inside the purpose statement and also leading into what Josh and Corey are saying, too. So I think the community is involved in this, but it's kind of like when we're setting the goal, as you stated, WASTA does not even have a policy. So if we're leading the trend in anti-racism for the state, it has to be goal-driven, purpose-driven. And I think having the repercussion part in there, not saying like this is a punitive action, but it's just like this, if we don't tolerate it, then what happens when someone does tolerate it? Because racism is institutional, but I, as an individual teacher, may allow something to happen. And then how, as I'm a cog in this institution, how am I disrupting the goal of of the anti-racism policy? If that makes sense? Okay. Okay.
Any other thoughts on the purpose statement? I think we've got a lot of rich, rich conversation on that. And I think, I think we're going to, we can work through that. So thank you, everybody. And I think that now takes us into the, the second part, which is the definitions, which I think really got, is important because we've looked at other statements, other statements, not policies, that entities in 2020, a lot of entities, public and private, came out with anti-racism statements. And they, you know, a lot of terminologies get, get used and people don't always have the same definition of what it is. And so I think you can't move people down a trajectory if you're not speaking the same language. And so I think it's, we talked at our last meeting, that we, last study session, that we all felt pretty strongly that we wanted to set forth in our policy, a list of appropriate definitions that we, we all could agree on. So I, here's the list. There's anti-racism, individual racism, institutional racism, structural or systemic racism, and then also definitions for equity, discrimination in schools, discriminations, you know, at the federal level, at the state level, and then discrimination in employment. So that when we're talking about our policy, this is what we mean. So I want to go, make sure we go around and these, if I'm, if I'm correct about this, the, the anti-racism, individual racism, institutional racism and structural racism all come from the Government Alliance on Racial Equity. Okay, so the, this, the national recognized organization that advises public entities. Okay.
Quick question. Do the rest of these that have been included also come from GARE?
No.
Okay, thank you.
No, the equity, that definition came from our equity, our equity team and our equity department, the work that Justine Johnson does. So we have an equity framework that exists and we took that definition from there. So that's our homegrown Tacoma definition of the discrimination in schools definition comes from Title VI from the federal law. The discrimination in schools, the state, comes from Washington law. And then discrimination in employment comes from Washington RCW 4960188. And Malik, Malik wants to give a little more context around GARE.
Yeah, so GARE is an institution of a lot of municipalities. I think I said before, GARE is an institution that a lot of municipalities use when they do this work, so DEI work and then anti-racism work specifically. So what we found when we looked, like I said, we didn't have a lot of examples to see in Washington State. So when we kind of broadened our search to look nationally, the folk that, you know, have sort of preceded us across the country who have done some of this work, it made sense for them. And I think it does make sense for us to look at having some similar language as the municipalities that go alongside the school districts use. When I worked at the city of Tacoma, we, we remember GARE, I think we still are actually. So yeah, they're a place that does professional development and support for DEI work for, for a lot of different government institutions. So it made sense to pull it from GARE. I mean, these are the folks that are the, the experts in the room when it comes to things like this.
And, and also the other benefit then is other, certainly municipalities and governmental organizations probably would also go, turn to this. It's like there WASDA, they would, they would turn to them. And so it would be a consistent definition across other partners. And so, but before we just, you know, adopted it, I wanted to make sure everyone would look at it and see, are there any, in the first four, the, the ones from GARE, anti-racism, individual racism, institutional racism and structural or systemic racism? Does anyone have any thoughts or questions or do you feel that something more could be added in any way to any of those definitions? Just want to make sure we.
So for me, I did appreciate the, the four that came from GARE and what I personally struggle with is institutional racism occurs within institutions and organizations such as schools that adopt and maintain policies, policies, practices and procedures, right? So in that practice, the practice is those who dish out punishments to students of color or those who are judging staff of color or those have power over people of color within the district. So then it reverts back to individual racism when we're talking about institutional racism because those in positions of power are the ones who are implementing these practices. So I think when we're going back to that goal in the beginning and those like, how is this really going to impact us? Individually, we have to have stronger goals and an individual reference because how racism plays out inside of an institution are individuals of power impacting those of color. And, and so that, I like the definitions, they're very concise, but just something to think about when we're getting to that, the goal and the framework for individuals because it will be individuals who make this all work.
And maybe one of the ways to do that is to, you know, speak to the fact that the institution has to be very purposeful about our definitions and, and the practices that we are providing professional development for our staff to do. And then that's when they inter, interlock with the individual and it's the interpretation of that behavior that, that maybe they don't really realize that they're doing that. And then so that's where more professional development and the great work that our superintendent on special assignment, Santorno and, and her team, the design team have been doing to actually root, you know, go root that out and, and make sure that we retrain, or I should say train in some cases, and then continually retrain on that topic because it's, it's taking the institutional, he taking racism out of the institution doesn't mean that racism stops to exist within the institutional operation because it's operated by people, which is what you're saying.
Yes.
So I love that.
Thank you.
And anyone else have anything on these four? So we're good with, with this? Okay, so let's, let's quickly go down the other four. I mean, the last three are basically law, so, but the next one, and I just think a shout out to our team here, equity team here at, at TPS, but just and fair inclusion, equity is just and fair inclusion, an equitable society is one in which all can participate and prosper. The goals of equity must be to create conditions that allow all to reach their full potential. That seems to me every student, every day kind of seems to make sense. Is that working for folks? Okay. And then, as I said, the last three are just basically current law. So, but at least those that may not know that would have a definition in our policy.
And I thought it was helpful, if we could refer to the law, like Title VI, I don't know if there's, I think that helps ground a level of credibility to those definitions.
Thought the same thing, wrote that down. Okay, well, great. Okay, so now we've gotten through those two parts. And now let's go down, and I really appreciate that our council team really heard what we said at our last couple of meetings and some other meetings that followed to, that what we want to do in this policy is really express what we believe, what we as a school district believe. It's the every student, every day applied to the racism issue. And, and so thank you for coming up with that, that framework because I think it's, it's really a statement of taking that purpose statement and laying it down about application. So, all right. So the first one is, we believe schools must mirror our communities. And there's four bullets there. And does anyone have any comments on any of those four?
It seems like racial identity and ethnicity. I'm just thinking like, including ethnicity along with racial identity would be important.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's helpful to broaden library books to instructional materials.
Which, which bullet are you on?
I apologize, the third. Should we go bullet by bullet or are we?
Well, I would just, no, I did, I just wanted to know which one you were working.
Yeah. Good idea.
I know there's current legislation around mascots for Native American images. I'm not sure we've broadened that as a state, but I think as we open new schools and knowing this is a document of, and maybe it's down here further around how schools or facilities are named or mascots are created, should have to, I don't have the right terminology. But, and it may be that we do further policy work in another space, but that also hit me as I was reviewing those.
So Josh, I missed what you actually said, the one on library books.
Instructional materials.
Yeah.
Where is that?
Instructional, so instead of library books, have it be instructional materials?
That's what I missed what you said. So do you want to make it be instructional materials?
I'm just offering suggestions.
I think you're suggesting both.
Both.
Library books and instructional.
That covers everything, instructional materials covers library books, right?
Well, and not get a check of books in the library.
I was going to say that library books means it's whatever's published out there that's we then bring into our libraries, which is different than the curriculum. It's additional. I mean, I don't know, is.
You can use a library book as an instructional.
Yes, but.
But it also makes.
Let's let our team, they will give it that. But I think the intent is just to make sure it's not limited to only libraries.
Exactly. Okay. Anything else in this group?
I think just, our district has been doing a lot of work in equity and like our last month, we had gave acknowledgement to the Native American, the P'au'au' tribe and how they had brought in their language into the schools, into the classrooms and into our buildings. So I think it's like, just, this is doubling down on the work we're already doing, but making it very specific to ensure that those of different racial and ethnic backgrounds know that the school is intentionally trying to do this work. I feel like if I wasn't on the board and had I missed that meeting, I wouldn't have known about that. Even if it was at my kid's school, I wouldn't have known, right? So I think the policy makes it clear to those from the outside and like, our district is trying to ensure that our, our district believes we must mirror our communities.
I love that. And you also made me think of something that's, here, we talk about visual images, but we don't talk about languages on, in here. And so I think that we do, we do a good job. We try hard to, to communicate with families in their native tongue. But we don't say that here. And part of talking to communities is speaking to, to them in a language they can understand. So can we add something about language?
And I think that adds to the inclusivity, whereas it takes away like racism is a black white issue.
Yep.
And it starts to include so many other people of the community.
Like everybody else.
Everyone else.
Everyone else.
So Renee and Malik, with that, as I was rereading the purpose, does the languages need to be headed up top or is that covered in other pieces? So something for you to consider down the road.
Yeah, I've got a note about language. We do have, the very last bullet says the policy shall be translated into other languages and be made available for families. I think what I'm hearing is we want to also acknowledge that racism and bias can occur based upon someone not speaking English as a first language. So we want to capture that as well.
So ELL.
All languages are welcome, right? In, in our schools, we're saying.
Yeah.
It shouldn't be discrimination. Two kids want to speak a separate language on their own, they could speak that.
Oh, absolutely, yes. We want to make that.
How much detail we want to go into that.
Okay. So something about the ELL.
It's, I think it's, ELL is a program for English learners. And so I, I think of, one form of racism would be is, is at the lunch table, two Hispanic kids are speaking Spanish and says, hey, you need to speak English here.
No, you don't.
Yeah.
And so I appreciate the languages and welcome. I don't know how to weave it in. So I.
We're just throwing more task at them by the minute.
Yeah, this is a really exciting.
Malik takes excellent notes.
I do take excellent notes, but what we'll do is, so like Dr. Garcia pointed out earlier, we, we're not even, oh, Josh, okay. As Josh pointed out earlier, we're not in the first reading. So I think we can suggest and propose some ways to incorporate and then maybe like highlight a red line to see, you can directly see where it's been added. It could be as something as, you know, an individual bulleted item that kind of uses some of the language, Director Leon is saying, you know, the Tacoma School District believes that all languages are welcome at our schools, kind of thing.
Right. And you know, that is where we see so much of the racism that isn't black, white or it's, it's for someone speaking a different language and that being off-putting to the students who don't speak that language and they act out. So really critically important. And it's language and culture. And it's almost, it's almost the culture too, but I know I don't want to get so expansive that, but you know, if somebody brings something, you know, funny looking or funny smelling for lunch, you know, that everybody picks on them.
This is going to be, you know, once again, extremely complex.
We're going wild.
No, I think it's an important conversation, you know? And it's going to raise a lot of difficult conversations in a variety of places as somebody that grew up and still is mixed races is, you know, it's a, maybe appropriate for me to say something to someone else that also has a similar background, but not okay for Director McElroy, who doesn't have that background. And that's going to really position us to have some very difficult conversations about what is racism and what is it not?
So part of that is about educating people about what is with, you know, yeah. I agree. Okay. Anything more in this group of, of now five? Because we've added a bullet somehow for language.
I love the bullet we added, by the way.
All right, cool. So the next one is, we believe students, staff and community members must be welcome to share their perspective. And we have a bunch of bullets here. So take a quick look and see if, if those all seem to be along, going along the lines that were.
I, I have some feelings about share their perspective because it makes, it, it makes me wonder about, like as we think about, was I think about the motivation in Buffalo, New York, that, that's a perspective. And so I guess like that, that sentence, that, that it gives me pause because that does potentially invite, right? If we are, if we are welcoming students and community members to share their perspective and that perspective is exactly in opposition to the purpose of this work and this policy.
You know what? I think we've got, I think we can work through this because it's really not, it's, it's basically, if you look at all the bullets, they're talking about.
Experiences.
You know, if you see something, say something and, and that.
I'm just offering.
Right, so we just need to change.
The perspectives, maybe there's a way to.
So I'm saying that we need to, we can take off, we can change the title part.
Right.
Because that, you just cross off welcome to share perspectives and, and we can find a better way to describe the bullets.
That's what she was saying.
I know, and I'm just reiterating it. I'm crossing it off and writing it down.
It all make meaning and sometimes it's out there speaking.
I'm repeating it so we're clear.
I got you. That makes sense.
I think you captured in the first two bullets, what I was trying to say about reporting. I, I think the part that I'm struggling with is, is the empowering and encouraging versus the responsibility to. And I don't know if that's just me, but I think that's the.
Yes.
The pieces of moving past, you know, we encourage you to, that you have the responsibility as a member of our community, school community. That's in our locus of influence.
There's also a, a bit of a different exercise when we're thinking about staff versus students. So there's a pretty clear and distinct duty that staff, like a legal duty and an ethical duty that we can say the staff owes to the students that they love and oversee and supervise and teach. It isn't identical to what students may have to each other. So there's got to be a way that we can recognize that as well.
Do you think the staff could have a separate bullet about their ethical duty to report and speak up on these instances separate? And so like the ones about empowering, yeah, we want to empower staff, student and community members, but one specifically to staff on their responsibility. And then I think when we invite community members, there's, there's a time and a place. And like I was hearing Lisa talking about perspective and I'm thinking the same thing. There's a time and a place. So, you know, where, where is it welcome for community members who are not parents to bring concerns? Where is it welcome? Because as a community member, I'm like, oh, I can just go to Silas High School and voice my perspective. If I'm reading this and I'm feeling very emboldened by my own perspectives, I'm like, okay, well, I'm a community member, I live in this community, I'm going to go to this high school or this middle school and voice my perspective based on a policy. Because the people who like to do those things, they take it from our policies and then go with it and run wild. So kind of more, be more clear about what a community member is welcome. So kind of more be more clear about what a community member is welcome to share and how, who is not a parent. What a family is welcome to share and how, what a student is welcome to share and how, and then a staff is welcome to share and how. Kind of like making it more specific. And then I like I like the word experience more than perspective personally.
And I would also say that we don't have a lot of control over community members, whereas staff and students, that's within the purview. So I'm I'm almost thinking, I don't know, I don't want to say take them out.
Don't want to take it out.
But 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 I think that there's I like what you're saying is differentiate because it's a different it's their relationship with us is different.
We also have community members that volunteer in our schools, that partner with our schools.
No, no, absolutely.
So, yeah, I I.
But that is clear.
The idea of.
It's legal. Differentiation is critical, giving other reasons why it's a good idea.
I really appreciated where you put bullets three and four in. And I think, you know, as I read it, reread it, you can see the cascading effect of how they build on it. And so that restorative conversation. I'm wondering in bullet three, is it only district and school administrators must address? Or is it a broader staff that must address? And then although we don't have a policy, I wonder the value of having restorative practices when it's staff to staff.
That's a tough one. I like.
Students to student or student to staff or staff to student. So I don't know if that's appropriate or not.
I think it is if you're wanting feedback from work, I think keeping it broad to all staff, be able to have to be able to address it is important, not just administrative.
I really appreciated bullet. Obviously, I appreciate a lot of it. The bullet five, we encourage staff to receive feedback about possible behaviors to reflect, engage and to seek understanding. I think that's an active versus a passive. Thought that was well, well put.
And then my question always goes back to you. Who is going to lead this work and who's going to enforce this work and who's going to collect the data on this work? I think that data will prove that we're moving in the right direction and restorative conversations are great and I appreciate them. I utilize them. And and who keeps the data on that? So if there is a staff to staff incident, how does that get documented? What data framework does it go into? Which cabinet underneath the superintendent would be responsible for keeping track of that? So that the superintendent can ensure that we are doing that full cycle of work. I just feel like it needs to be if we're going to be encouraging people to bring it forward, where do they go? After just to their teacher and then after just to their principal and then after the superintendent, how is this going to work? Within that kind of framework?
It's an one that we should unpack.
Oh, not today.
No, I understand. But one of the things that we've tried to address in institutional racism is the data that we collect on discipline for students and how that leads to certain things in a progressive discipline society. So I I I think that's an interesting piece on how we collect this data and what are the unintentional consequences for it in the institution. I don't I don't have a good answer. I just.
What I was thinking about is when you brought up the staff to staff thing. So that's a that's the part that I really want there to be data on because when we're if you lose a teacher and they say, oh, you know, it just wasn't a good fit, but then you go back into their data and you see they had multiple incidents of anti racist work being undone or something, you know, bigoted towards them. So it's kind of like the data for staff, not for students, but definitely to track when when we when we have staff, you know, who are going through these situations in our district as they're going through in our society in Tacoma at large. This is the thing that's happening. Happens at the grocery store. So how do we track it for the adults, not the kids, I think is what I was thinking about.
I so appreciate your comments. I adding on yes and.
Yeah, yes, and took you to another level. Yeah. Okay.
So in that vein, I mean, I think I agree to not to build a file on kids. I understand that point, right? But to maybe without their name attached, we also would like to know if there are some schools, some places where there's a whole lot of events happening to kids to set off some red flags for us. You administrators to know that there's a certain area that might need more help with this and learning and changing. But so it's some mechanism to investigate it, rectify it, you know, record it for staff for sure. So.
I appreciate the final bullet there.
Yeah.
I also don't think that it should be the final bullet. I think it should be the first one.
Go ahead, Cory.
Yeah, because then it leads into the second bullet.
Which is the first at the moment. Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
If you.
Right. If you switch it.
He does take thorough notes. He's been typing the whole time.
Oh, no, Malik does.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any? Renee and Malik, do these sound like they're making sense and?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I'm I'm excited. As Malik said, I think we can use we can redline so you can see what we change. And then
Yep.
I think it'll be exciting to have a first draft and then to get more community feedback as well.
I have actually, I'm going back to bullet number three and the about assumptions, jokes or comments based based upon hate. So I it makes me wonder about the definition of hate.
Hate stereotypes or biases. So all of those.
Because I know what that means to me. And that may not necessarily mean the same thing. So I don't have a suggestion other just an observation that that just just that that could mean something different depending on who the audience is. Yeah.
Do we need to define? Okay. Anybody else have any any thoughts, any other thoughts on this group?
I think Josh made it really clear that this is going to become really uncomfortable. And I'll say as culture shifts, I know like when I was a kid, it was like only brown people could say the N word, but only brown people like you couldn't be mixed. If you were too light, you couldn't say it. But because of, you know, TikTok and Instagram and culture becoming like intertwined in community, some of our beliefs of what is racist as thirty and uppers is different than what our middle schoolers believe is racist. It's different than what our high schools believe is racist. It's different than what our teachers believe is racist. So it's gonna become this point of restorative justice. So I think that it's really great that that was included in this section as well of having restorative conversations of I have cousins with blonde hair and blue eyes. They're just as black as me because our parentage and our lineage, but because of how they may look to others, they may say something that's culturally relevant to them and their black lived experience. But if someone from the outside would be like, you've got blonde hair. I know you're not, you know, so that restorative justice, I think it's just really great that it was brought into this work and left right there in the center. I think it has to remain and kind of I think that's got to be the focal point of the point of speaking up is to be restorative. It's not to be retaliated. So I like that Cory said to put that first. So retaliation isn't first and maybe ending with restorative. So that way we it's full cycle like we're starting with. We're not retaliating.
Putting it right after the no retaliation.
And that makes me think like the evolution of language, right? And what is acceptable? Because also like within the LGBTQ community, the word, the the term queer for elders is very offensive. And really, it was used as a way to discriminate and harm and degrade. Yeah, and dehumanize. And just similarly, right, the youth like ten or 12 years ago said, uh-uh, this is how we're gonna they reclaim that word. So I wonder too about like, is there a way to capture an acknowledgement of the evolution of language and understanding of race and of of anti racism? So that it doesn't have that closed end, right? That that and it doesn't it leaves open for that this isn't the only interpretation, right? This is how this is our foundation and our base as we as we acknowledge the continuum of this work and as generations redefine and reclaim.
Yep.
Culture.
That's a good one. Thanks. Different kind of language. All right. So next we'll go to we believe in staff professional development on anti racism. There are three bullets. So take a look at those and then.
I appreciate the word manifestations of racism. I just wanted to call that. I appreciate that selection of of language.
I think I brought it up at the study session and Josh looked at me with really big eyes and I'm like, yeah, so what about professional development? He's like, okay, we're not there yet. But now that we are here, I'm grateful. It was great. His eyes were so big. I rewatched it and I giggled. I think the professional development part is key because that's what I was talking about in the beginning with those definitions, that institutional versus individual. And if we don't have so so let's say we we find a staff and they they're in this cycle of being reported. But then we look in their thing. We're like, oh, wait, they didn't get the professional development on anti racism. So we're not gonna be punitive. We're gonna be restorative and here's your professional development for next year because everybody has required hours and things. So I'm just I appreciate that it is a part of the anti racist work is that we're saying and our staff will be trained in our beliefs. So it's kind of like giving them our mission and then like kind of doling it out in a way that is respectful of their profession, but also is understanding that this is the policy. This is how we want to operate. This is how we want to change. So how are we gonna do it? And it starts individually to create institutional change.
Cory.
Yeah, on the on the piggyback of that, because I feel like you just looked at my notes from over there somehow. But I was leaning in here to this, the professional development on anti racism. When I think about PD, it's it's this one, I would just offer up a suggestion that in said PD that we hit home on our definition of racism in this policy. So that individual perspectives on racism isn't the isn't necessarily distracted or the the center of someone's individual training, right? Y'all say y'all, well, if we don't provide our definition of racism in said trainings, then one can lean into their own understanding of what racism is and they might take away from what the training is meant to do. So.
So do we want to? When I think about racism and beliefs is beliefs don't change overnight. You know, professional development is is a limited time and space with other competing interests, right? So when you say all staff, that sends a pretty strong flag that we then have to change our model for what professional development is to ensure that it's happening, which is the right thing to do. But that will be competing with others. And so are you looking for staff to demonstrate a level of competency on those definitions, knowing that their beliefs may not change overnight?
No, but I think it needs to be noted. So if I took a training on infant mortality, because that's something you have to train in early learning, right? And I missed a year of that training and a child died somewhere in Tacoma and they checked all of our records and they were like, Chelsea, it was not aware of this because it wasn't in my file. So it's not so it's like incidents of racism are going to occur, but then we're reflecting black. So if if an incident happens, I like saying Silas because it's on the north end. So if an incident happens at Silas, but then we check all of our other high school professionals and then we're like, oh, snap. Some of our teachers at Lincoln also missed this training. So it's just kind of like, we don't have to know that they're great at it or they can pass a test on it. But we have to know that we did our part as a district to ensure that they were aware of what our definition is.
Thank you.
I'm not sure. I think it should have to maybe pass a test on it because that's the way sometimes our education is going. We sometimes give tests to folks, at least in university systems and I think professional development too. And if you get the right answers, great. You don't you take less time doing the lessons later. Maybe you don't do any lessons. You just reup. Okay, you know the information. Maybe you take a smaller lesson. You miss a lot of questions, then you have to do the one hour or whatever the longer lesson is to then take the test and say you you understand that knowledge. So.
I like that.
I'm not saying we give. I don't know how it's done here for the for the staff, but.
Some of the PDs have.
Proving that you know, I think proving you know what what we think is appropriate knowledge. I think somehow we need to prove that they know that.
Well, and I would say, looking at the way these three bullets that we currently have are written, I think it's very explicit that it's professional development towards change. It doesn't say change immediately, but it the purpose is to change behavior, change philosophy, change vision. And so I so I want to actually commend you guys because I think the the language that you chose really gets at that. That, you know, because professional development is all over the map in terms of what it looks like. And and again, kudos to the to the design team that Carla's already, you know, been leading the group on because they're they're focusing on that. They're looking at equity and how, you know, professional development can change perspective. But this is a very this is a deeper topic.
Can I add on that too? It makes me think about like when we were when classified staff were being like having PD you know, around equity, but also relevant to the job.
Yes.
Relevant to what their job is. So I think like that it just comes to mind listening to remembering back to the presentation we had. Because what's relevant to classified staff, and that is a wide range of their responsibilities and their interactions, right? And who are they interacting with? So I I it just gets to the complexity of it, I think, in terms of the setting the expectation. And then I I guess I also have this, I'm feeling like we're also getting into operational territory within which I'm not, you know, we have to envision the implementation as well. So that's I just some things swimming around.
Okay. Any other comments on?
I wanted to lean into what you said earlier, though, about who and then who takes the test. I feel strongly that administrators, administration, they're the ones who do need, we need to have proof that they understand this concept because they are the ones who are going to implement this change and they're the ones who are going to lead this change. I think that like I like I brought up with institutional and individual, they're the individuals who can actually make this happen or completely derail it. And they are the individuals when parents are talking about racist incidents, they're the ones who parents are complaining about for decades in Tacoma, right? So it's kind of being aware of who needs a test. I do think that leaders need the test and not classroom leaders, not teacher leaders, the person in the building. So when we bring up this restorative conversation, there's got to be someone on site who knows who knows their stuff. And then also when we're leading this restorative work, if it's staff to staff or if it's student to staff, who's the other person in the room is typically an administrator. So they're the ones, I think, if we are gonna have a test ever, I'd want them to have it and I'd want proof that they understand this concept. And because for decades in this country, it is administrators who have enacted racist things against children. And it's not just Tacoma. That's the country. It's the system. And the system was designed in that way that administrators could be punitive, that administrators can create data on students, that administrators can create data on staff. So if we're gonna rectify that, if we are gonna have a test, I'd want proof that our administrators and our leaders, CAB and district wide, were very clear on this and understood the definition. That way, if it's ever breached, it's really easy to punish them, get out of our district if you don't believe in anti racist work. And I'm saying that right now because I truly believe that.
And yet, Director Leon.
I think we all know that the training is continuous, but maybe just the work can receive continuous training should be in that third bullet. And then in the second bullet, there's the sentence about naming race is a critical component. Maybe just describing what naming race is, that race exists. That's important to understand race, but maybe a sentence about what naming race means.
I would add race and ethnicity. I feel like I like I want to keep saying race and ethnicity, making sure that that's included. And then thinking about your comments, Chelsea, I think about like the if this is the practice of this work, there's 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 so much room for error. And if if people aren't afforded, i- if people aren't afforded the opportunity to grow into the practice of anti racism, like I just I I'm just curious, like, how do we also that seems to me like part of the cultivating of the culture and climate of of the essence of what I believe we are. of what I believe we are striving for, but also giving space to become competent, right? So knowing, right, there's, there's, there's that step of awareness and knowing and then practice. And, and I feel for myself, like I'm still growing in my own practice. So I would, I would, I would hope that there was space for people to grow, not to dismiss or, you know, neglect the responsibility and also how, like, this work can be very intimidating. So I feel like we've, many of us have had conversations of just being at the dais, having the conversation is intimidating. So it's just a, just some wonders I have about.
One day I'm going to be a gentle person.
I'm not asking you to be different.
No, I'm praying on it every day, I want to be a gentle person and have a gentle approach. However, when it comes to anti-racist work, I, I don't think there's any room for gentleness anymore, especially after what we've seen just recently. And this happens on a regular basis in this country, that people are attacked due to their race. And I feel that a microaggression of that, we're not, we're not going to have guns, we're going to have administrators who allow continuous racial incidents to happen. We're going to have students and families who feel unsafe in their buildings. So we're creating a system of unsafety by very small microaggressions of racism. So I don't think I can be gentle about it because by allowing continuous small microaggressions, we grow students who become, like the students we've seen, who've been becoming adults who do horrific racist things. So I don't feel, I don't feel like there's room to be gentle on it when it comes to our administrators because, like you were talking about, when we, if we get these data points and we're like, "There's a school where there's continuous incidents." Who is at fault at a school? If a school is failing, they blame the principal. So if a school's failing in racism, okay, what is this leader doing to change that culture? And what is this leader doing to train his staff? And hey, I, these are, these are our district policy, these are what we believe. So if we have data on that person being restorative, then that person gets to stay. But if we have data saying that this person has brushed 75 incidents under the rug, why would that person be given any grace?
So I appreciate what I think I hear you saying. So I think the part that I'm pausing on is that we are taking a label of a specific role because of their positional authority and saying that they are the only ones. Where I'm looking at staff. So the same could be applied for anybody in any role inside the school system of a classroom and that. And so it's making me pause and saying an administrator is the cause, it feels, and I've been saying that's the, is the, the one that is solely responsible for whether racism is happening inside. I think the administrative role is, should be judged on the response to incidents of racism. As an individual, I think there are individuals in all different roles, including administration, that have demonstrated they are perpetuating or are racist. And they should also individually be held accountable. And so I'm wrestling through that balance of, is it the role? Because the role is by position, is forced to make decisions.
I feel like they get blamed for all other types of things, so why can't we blame them for this too?
I don't feel like anti-racism is about blame.
Um, well, I think as a person who lived it, and I just feel like as a person in the community, so if a school is failing, we look at the leadership. We don't say, "Oh, there must be a bad third grade teacher in there." We'll say, "Wow, that principal really isn't doing enough to support the third grade learners." So it's just kind of like, from a person, I'm saying outside perspective. I've worked in a district and in this district and I'm like, as a staff, I know what I was culpable for, right? But I feel like as a person, a community member reading our policy, they're going to say, "Well, who's at fault here and how are we going to, how, how do they see the change?" And so it's kind of like, I was just saying, if there is going to be a test, then the test should go to leaders because that's their job is to lead.
I appreciate that.
But yeah, that's kind of where I'm...
And then I'm just unpacking and I'm making meaning as I go and the, and the fault becomes in the response, right? Administrators are not responsible for everything, they're held accountable, right? And so...
But I think I kind of touched on that when I was replying to Lisa, I straight up said, "If we saw that person was responsive and was doing the restorative work, they stay. But if we saw that person wasn't responsive and wasn't doing the work, then they go." And it's kind of because they were talking about a punishment. So it's not like, I don't think a punishment has to be like so cut and dry. But if we see a person's doing the work, if we're going to give grace, we give grace to those who do the work and we don't give grace to those who don't. And I feel very strongly on this and I'm going to keep saying it strongly and out loud. And if there's an administrator in the district, you guys have my email. I'm not hurting anybody by saying do the work or don't, you know?
I'm not taking it that way. I think you're also saying that there's an expectation for everyone in every role to do that. If there's somebody in a different role that is not doing that work, that's the point of this policy.
Yeah, but I mean, they touched on that, but then we were talking about, when I was thinking about, because the punishment term and repercussion term has been brought up, where does that go? Who does that go to? That's the part where I'm like, we have to touch on that because it was brought up in conversation. So it's like, the policy itself, it's talking about staff, students, administrations, community members. But because that term had been brought up, I'm thinking to myself, because it's been brought up, then where does that go?
So, and I think you're right. And I think that the implementation of that comes out in regulation and some other places after we have the policy.
Yeah.
I think, I think your, I think your point is very well stated, that, you know, sure, the people higher up the chain need to be on board and doing the work and making a difference. And this also gets into where your individual racism, there, you know, as a, as a, as a leader of a school, it's, it's pretty difficult to be held accountable for individuals that work with you. And so I think you're right about showing up and, and, you know, and trying to model and, and do all that. But I think we're getting into the weeds about, about this at this point in time and we're got to think back up here at the 30,000 foot level, so I think these guys got that. So is there anything else on this section around professional development? Okay, I think it's awesome. Okay, so the next one is "We Believe in Culturally Responsive Schools," which I think is super important. So I'm really glad we added that. And there are just two bullets here.
I like the second bullet and I think that's the part that, when we were talking about perspectives earlier, that's the part that I feel like when we talk about anti-racism, that others may feel left out. And it's saying, "Hey, this curriculum is not to be intended to make anyone feel personally responsible for the past." I think it's very important that that is stated.
Yeah.
Both, both points are, are, I think, spot on. But when I think about global pandemics prior to COVID-19, I think about white supremacy. And what I find is that big organizations tend to leave that out when they talk about instances of systemic oppression. So to see that labeled and called out first makes me happy, so, yeah.
Director Leon, did you have anything on this, on these two bullets?
Uh, no, I don't think so, no.
Director Keating? Okay. Josh?
I'm good.
Okay, cool. So, and then the last set of bullets is "We Believe Tacoma Public Schools Must Be a Welcoming Environment."
Would that be a place, Director Leon, that you think that language should be included about spoken languages?
It could go there naturally.
I think there's an opportunity to broaden our public statement. I think about our webpage, I think about schools' webpages. The purpose statement, when it's finally, this is the piece that I see being publicly put in different places. I think about other documents that we may want to consider holistically and that it may not go into every document a teacher produces. I think about our graduation or our sports announcements. And so there's a real opportunity to continue to put it out there. So I worry about the limitation of a plaque somewhere without all the answers.
Did you, do you want to say?
Well, I think it's kind of, I think having a, because it's, was it bullet three? Each still should have a public statement against racism located. I think it should probably be the same statement, but I don't know about saying each school can make a little slight different statement. Maybe that's okay. But I like this idea of not just having it on a plaque, right? So it's almost like the Pledge of Allegiance, you know? You maybe say have a short version of our anti-racism statement. Today, everybody hears it with the morning announcements, with the game or the theater production, whatever it may be. So it permeates, like you're saying.
I think the last study session, I told Carla to add it to those cards. Just a small little blurb, so then it's like, it's everywhere.
Yeah, I think that was what she was saying on those cards is going to be something that's our purpose statement, that's what she was saying too, so.
The kids have to memorize it to graduate, right?
I think we want to be cautious about getting into the weeds too much in this study.
That was great.
I appreciate that.
I have a question about the last, and it's the last bullet point about translated into other languages. I guess I'm wondering about having it be more definitive because we have multiple languages. So just wondering, don't we have like, I don't remember, but it feels like it's well over...
Fifty, fifty different countries represented in seventy different languages.
I think it's like seventy-two.
So I'm only wondering about expanding it slightly, like maybe not saying, like giving a specific number, but just wondering, because is that, like, language is represented within our student population?
I got a question too on that. Because is only this policy going to be translated into multiple languages? Because is it really necessary to state if all of our policies are translated to other languages? Does that need to be included here? And that's why I brought up the spoken language piece, like we're welcoming spoken language because the part about this policy will be translated. It kind of alludes to the not all of our other policies are translated.
And our policies are translated. I believe it's a civil rights piece. And so I know that there's a lot of interpretation about Google Translator, but that is a measurement that allows us to reach the diversity of the needs in there. So our whole website is available to be translated as they go. So that was the question that I have is, and maybe it's important that is in that statement that says "All policies," because it is more, this is around anti-racism and that's the setting page versus the single.
Yep.
Right, and then we could refer to our other policy that, that discusses translation of not just policies, but other different materials that are important to families. And yeah, I love this conversation because it's an iterative process and I think that was sort of an attempt to say, "Okay, we need to address the language piece." And so you were able to springboard off of that and so I appreciate the feedback about languages.
Any other comments on these bullets? Okay, so on the references, I was wondering, Renee and Malik, if, since you added 5266 to the list of things you presented on, but I'm just making, want to make sure that that gets added here too. And, and then I love that, that the laws are all there. And I think in speaking to what Superintendent had mentioned earlier, I think it's probably a good idea to put them in parentheses in the, in the actual definitions.
Thirty-two oh five was also left off of the references.
Thirty-two oh five as well?
Yeah.
What was thirty-two oh five?
Sexual harassment of students perihilis.
My social emotional learning is the one, I was doing, I was counting them, not, not even, so social emotional learning got added here, but wasn't one of the ones we discussed earlier, so.
How strongly do we feel about the resources? I have found that hyperlinks come and go. And so I really appreciate the references. And I don't know, I'm just asking is like, how strongly do we feel that those are there?
That's a good question. I included those as a part of transparency of showing some of the resources that we referred to as we did this work. Again, well, there are thought experts out there that we rely on. So when it comes to a first reading of a policy, typically we don't cite to all of the, of the sources.
Thank you.
Okay.
Maybe we can find a way to capture that, maybe I can, somewhere on the webpage and then you, if it's on the webpage, we can just change it as, at will.
Yeah, but thank you for adding them on today because I think that was helpful. Because I actually clicked on a couple of them and tried to sort of, I learned some things, so.
We didn't want to think that we just made up all these words.
Or, that's great. All right, well, well done, group. So before we move on to next steps, I just wanted to give, on the actual document that we've discussed tonight, is there anything that's popped up for anybody else or any last comments you wanted to add about your feelings about where we are now on this?
I'm going to jump in and pretend to be Josh here and just remind people who might be listening that we aren't necessarily discussing a policy, but we're moving towards a policy. We're working on the language that could potentially be in a policy, but we have not landed there yet.
I like that, that was good.
And so that just goes into next steps, if you want to change the last slide. And so what, what we're going to do next steps is the staff is going to take the feedback that we've spent time talking about tonight and writing copious notes, thank you, Malik. And we will come back and have a first reading on the, on this anti-racist policy. And we have a target date of the second meeting in June, which is about, well, that's about a month away, which gives us time to do some research and some go back and forth. And, and then to maybe do some community engagement and reaching out to some, some groups in the community and sort of touching base with that. And then we have, as you know, the Equity Policy Review Team, which is a group of 15-plus community members who are very committed and engaged in this process of providing review of our, every single policy that we've passed since, I'm not sure, was it December of, two year ago? Or was it August a year ago? It's been about a year.
I think it's been since August.
Yes, it's almost a year. And that group has met many, many times. And every single time that we take up a policy as a board member at first reading and then second reading, before second reading, we have this group, this community group has dissected it and given our, their opinions and had, their input has been reflected back. And in every single policy, I think they have made exceptionally astute and very, very helpful changes that have made it better. And of course, also in that process, before it gets to the Equity Review Team, the superintendent has his cabinet team and then it goes out to principals. And so any policy has been seen by all the different levels of folks that can, with a different eye for us. And then, so then we will have second reading before the school year starts. Ideally, you know, hopefully we, yeah, so that's the goal.
And then I'll remind the general public is on our website, there's also a place for you to provide feedback to the policy in there. And so, you know, and wherever we land with final draft regulation is the legal team has to make sure that we can legally execute this. And so as folks say, "I don't like this word" or "I do like this word" or "I want this sentence", it's, it's important just as an opportunity to say, "Yes, but we do have some legal requirements to ensure that we have to fulfill with any policy development." So if folks are watching, they can start taking notes. Probably best to wait till that first reading before we send those because we just don't, you know, the team has to have a chance to really digest, decide which recommendations are legal, which ones are appropriate. Because as Director Strozier, we didn't take any votes tonight.
Right.
We offered some thoughts and opinions.
So we're looking towards the, hold those thoughts. And on June 23rd-ish, somewhere around there, we will be having a, at our business meeting, we will be talking about first reading. After that point, those of you that have other comments to that draft.
I just want to thank Renee and Malik again for bringing us to this point from the last study session. So, yeah, thank you.
Yeah. And also to the team, as I said, the Equity Design Team that's already doing a lot of this hard work internally and Justina and her team that, you know, provided the equity definition and all, and the superintendent, it has been a collective commitment. And thank you to each, each one of you and colleagues on the board for, this has been a tough conversation multiple times. And again, I will reiterate what Vice President Keating said, that I want to especially thank. that I want to especially thank Director Strozier who got us onto this topic for a retreat and really saw immediately diving into it, how incredibly important it was for our students' success. So thank you. Anyone else have any finer, final comments for the good of the order? All right, this, we, the study session is adjourned.
Go eggs.
Stop.
Ridiculous, just ridiculous.